Twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, it's ten AM. And, okay, here's, County Council has just arrived. We have County Council, we have to my left Commissioner Sue Gold, myself Commissioner Huxley, to my right Commissioner Court Voice. I'm gonna make a couple of comments. At the opening of this workshop, the purpose of the workshop was to discuss the formation of a Parks District. And my comments, I've made reference to them one or two times over the past couple of weeks also. We have policies for workshop meetings, we have policies for general meetings, we have policies for basically meetings of the governing body. And this is again, a situation where this workshop has not met, or not even nearly met the requirements of the current policy in place for workshops and public meetings. There is no information packet with it. That is one of the mandatory requirements. There is a policy in place. There was also a memorandum on November eighth, which I addressed recently, November eighth, two thousand sixteen, which addressed this again. Even on that memo from County Council, it did not touch on some of the additional requirements for workshops. And my position is that we're either going to follow the policies for disclosure and putting forth information before the public and have open constructive public meetings, or we're not. And my position is, on this particular meeting, given the situation with the budget process coming up, and a lot of associated issues with that, finances, and given the Flores Lake issue that we're going to be discussing at some degree later this morning, which has some potentially horrific financial exposure to the county, and I reference potential, I'm going to say that we have not met, even remotely met, the requirements for this workshop, and therefore we should not hold this workshop. That is my position.
So, I don't know how detailed we have to have, but I received this thing from Jay, current County Parks Advisory Committee proposal. I think I got that last week, or?
About ten days ago.
There has, again, we have, Mr. Gold, we have a policy in place. County Council can, you know, not a part of this meeting necessarily, but review that with perhaps both Commissioners, both new Commissioners. We have a policy in place. It's somewhat detailed, we have order numbers that outline exactly what the requirements are for holding workshops, what is to be included, what's to be included with the public notice, and the consequences if it is not. It's that clear, it's that simple.
Point of order.
County Council.
So, can you make sure your microphone is on, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Time's arrived.
So that, that is my position.
Okay. Personally, I was not aware of the policy, I don't know how detailed the information you need is.
It's very specific, and I say I did address it. I believe in the last public meeting, well, the last general meeting we had also, I was very specific on it. I read some of the requirements. I referred to the November eighth memo. It is imperative that we follow for our benefit, so we have the packet in front of us, and that the public has the same packet in front of them. And that's my position for this meeting.
County Council.
Yes, Commissioner?
Are we at risk here of somehow disregarding or disrespecting the public in having an informed workshop? We have people in the audience that have spent time to come here. I see nothing wrong with just carrying on a conversation. We have so much work before us. I'd like to get started right now, and I do respect Commissioner Huxley wants to follow a strict guideline here, and I'm not opposed to that. But in terms of closing the meeting down today, if I understand correctly, you might be recommending that.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm absolutely not for that.
So, question, I'll ask Jay this. If this were to be closed down and you had a workshop at another time, is it going to significantly impact your ability to run the Parks Department?
Um, no. This is something that I've been asking for since almost December.
Mm-hmm.
And so, obviously, I was extremely excited when we were able to start this process, to begin it. I'm not certain exactly what Commissioner Huxley would like added into the packet, I would need to review the policy that he's describing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know that I necessarily would have anything to add in the discussion workshop, because the purpose of my intent was to discuss whether or not it was something that the Commission really wanted. It was initially referred to as a district, it's a Parks Committee. But I think having the avenue of adding public input and having some influential people from the community be a part of the public, I mean, the Parks process and the building process is, adds nothing but value to...
Oh, and I'm not disputing that.
Yeah. I mean, that, so initially...
If this were postponed, would it be a real problem?
I just don't know what would be, what would be gained, or what would be different. And so...
County Council, do you want to chime in on what the requirements are for the meetings, or shall I?
Well, you can start, Mr. Chair, and then I'd appreciate if you said which requirements were not met.
Okay. Well, first, we have, and this is a memo from County Council, huddle on November eighth, because there had been so many abuses of these meeting requirements, of these agenda requirements. It addressed both the general meetings and it addressed workshops. I'm not going to go through and read it, I urge, well, I would hope that...
Could you send us a copy of that?
Yes.
Please.
That's what I would ask.
I may be able to send it to you right now.
Okay. And also, there were other orders referred to or attached to this memo. This memo included approximately ten pages. It also went into the existing policy on agenda routing slips. And that was chapter fourteen, and it goes into the subsections. And that's agenda routing slips for each item that an individual would want or wish to put before the Commissioners for regular type meetings, workshops excluded. It went into late submissions in this. If an agenda routing slip, or deadline close of business is seven days prior to the Board of Commissioner meeting. And it goes into if a holiday football is in that period, it's eight days instead of seven. Late submissions, if an agenda routing slip and applicable attachments are not submitted by the deadline specified, the meeting must wait until the following meeting.
So, question, what, what things were not adhered to in this policy?
Let me go further on amending the workshops, because we're specifically on a workshop, but they are similar, the policy's similar. Goes further, again, in chapter fourteen, it's another section, okay? Goes into scheduling, general meetings are held, okay, workshops are not held on a routine basis, but when scheduled, would be held the second or fourth Wednesday of every month at ten AM. Exceptions to the schedule may be made for emergency purposes as determined by the Chair of the Board.
Okay, so we've met that, right? We're scheduled?
Notice. Okay, notice. Every attempt will be made to post a notice and supporting paperwork for a meeting or workshop five days prior to the meeting. If Commissioner fails to supplement their workshop request with paperwork, the workshop will not be scheduled. And the emphasis here, and we ran into it with general meetings, we ran into it with workshops, that just simply notice did not suffice. If we're going to talk about specific things within that general meeting, or within that workshop, we were requiring that applicable documentation be provided, so that we knew what was coming up before the meeting, and so did the citizens.
So, bottom line, that documentation was not provided?
There's no documentation. There's a public notice, that's it.
Okay. Actually, I saw that, yeah, I saw that this morning.
There was a supplemental packet, and it went out in a notice, too.
So now, okay...
And it was submitted on...
I don't go to supplemental packets...
Or not supplemental, I apologize.
And nor does the public have access to supplemental packets. All I saw was a public notice.
So, are you talking about this one, Jay?
I used the wrong term, yes. Yes, that was submitted with my...
But you probably just sent this to me individually, because I'm your liaison, no?
No, I sent it to the BOC admin.
Okay.
Yep.
But this did not go out to the public with a notice? Nothing went out? I re-verified, there was nothing that went out in the notice, other than the public notice of this workshop? No other information. I had other people verify it, nothing went out.
Mr. Chair.
Louis got it.
Did you receive materials with the notice?
Yes, she has the whole packet.
I did not. I did not. And I went to the website, and there's nothing there.
See, I got, I got the public notice to begin with, that Summer sent to my home email, that it was just a notice, and then this morning, when I got on my emails, this was attached.
Well, that may be this morning.
Yeah, I'm just saying, this was the first time I saw it attached to the...
Was it an older email, or today's email?
It was today's email, or, yeah, like the reminder thing.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just...
I just, I know that I submitted this over a week ago.
I've not seen it.
Well, everybody makes mistakes. You know, there's a, you know, a personal opinion here, there's the letter of the law, and there is the spirit of the law. There is the letter of the policy and the spirit of the policy. You know, workshop to me means get to work. And we have an opportunity in this board for a new day, a new attitude. Despite normal differences, we have an opportunity and a responsibility to, there's, how many people come here from Brookings or made an effort to be here? I'm not trying to push you into a corner to disrespect a policy. Okay, I'm just communicating with you the best of my ability, and offering that. We need to get to work, and this is, this is a valuable hour and forty-five minutes, and I'm just going to encourage the Board to consider, nothing will be lost from just having a reasonable conversation on the legitimacy and the value of having a Parks Committee. And, and let's move on.
Well, I have a question, Commissioner Boyce. Did you receive the packet that he's referring to, or not?
I don't think I have received it. I'm not sure what happened, but I've had some problems...
And so, it's kind of hard to talk about it intelligently. I've got it.
Okay.
And I've read it pretty thoroughly.
I've had some problems with my computer, and it's probably my own doing.
The public notice sent out, and it has the proposal attached to the bottom, onto the public notice.
It just...
And maybe it was a slip of the computer key that it didn't get to the public.
When was the public notice sent?
Friday.
Okay.
And it's attached to the bottom?
Wasn't attached to the notice that I received.
And I had a citizen that made sure I got it on my...
It was attached to mine.
Yeah, wasn't, wasn't...
Yeah, so...
But it's, it's not on the website. That's where I go when I don't see something else attached, and it's not on the website.
If I may, I think those of us who sign up to get emails, special notices of all your meetings, got it. But it wasn't on the website necessarily, but on Friday afternoon, I got an email from Summer that had two attachments. One was the notice of the, of this meeting, and the second one was the back of a multi-page document describing what was proposed. I didn't read it on Friday, but I thought...
I did not. Nor, and that's, then I go to the website for the information, it's not on the website.
Commissioner Gold? Does the rule say it has to be posted on the website with the material, or the notice just gets issued?
No, but I go for, it has to be somewhere.
All right, and it was somewhere?
Well, not, not that I've received, not that Commissioner Gold received till this morning, apparently.
Well, no, I got this...
That's my...
A while ago, at least last week.
Commissioner Gold, I appreciate that.
He just opened it this morning.
And I got the other. Now, it could have come a little earlier, I was not in yesterday, so...
So, that's my, that's my position, and that's why. And it would be the same if it were a general meeting and an item. We've been through this. And I encourage that, review the policies.
So, the evidence is that the Chair didn't receive it by email, but other people did, and so we have evidence that email notice with, and that we do know that the materials were submitted to Bach Office when the workshop was submitted, so that part of the, that part of the rules were complied with. And then, the notice was sent on Friday, which is when we publish, and that publication included the materials to people on the list to receive emails. But it's not apparently linked on the website with the materials. Summer, do you, did you post it anywhere on the website with the materials, do you know?
No, I just saw a record, I was in the mail, asking if you would, the notice and materials posted, or just...
Okay. And then what did you do?
I think we had a verbal conversation where I just posted the notice.
Okay, but what about sending the emails? You sent the email, right? Okay, with the materials?
Right.
Okay. Who do you send that to?
The agenda and public notices.
Does that include Board of Commissioners on it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, the Board, you know, has evidence from the Chair that he did not receive the notice by email with the materials. The Board has evidence that the materials were submitted in timely fashion, members of the public received them, who are on the list, and the list goes to the Board of Commissioners, but that it wasn't published on the website, and the rule doesn't specifically say the material shall be published on the website. So, it's a Board decision whether to continue with the meeting or not today.
Okay. And I, my position is clear. And I think Commissioner Boyce is, I'm not speaking for him, but I think his position is clear.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Gold, I appreciate your question, honestly. I may have overlooked it, and it's part of keeping, just keeping abreast of all the things that we have to read and deal with, and so I'm not offering an excuse, but I may have missed it, so in fairness to Ms. Madison, Mr. Tros, I, yeah, I, but I was looking forward to this meeting, I can tell you that, for the same reasons that Mr. Tros identified. And so, I'm asking for the Board to overlook this paralysis, potential paralysis, move forward, and it gives us an opportunity to make sure that we overcome this, as per Commissioner Huxley's concern and request, in the future. So I could make...
Well, no decisions are going to be made.
I know, I can't really make a move.
No decisions are going to be made at this meeting, simply we're going to be getting information. It would have been nice if everybody had read the information ahead of time, so that they could have questions, if possible, so, I don't know, I'm kind of, two of the Commissioners have not read the information, it sounds like, so...
I can only speak for myself.
That bothers me.
Correct. So, Mr. Chair, could I ask if there's anyone in the audience that wanted to speak specifically on this committee?
No, I think, I think we need to, you know, the decision needs to be made by the Commissioners at this point.
I'm not asking for...
I did print out copies for those...
I'm not asking for the, the private citizens here to weigh in on the decision, but if there's somebody here that traveled here specifically to talk on this subject, what would be wrong with hearing them out?
I'm going to defer still for a final opinion or decision from Commissioner Gold first.
Well, I think at this point, since no official decision is going to be made, I'm willing to hear Mr. Tros out on this matter.
Then, I'm going to excuse myself from the meeting, and I'll leave you to continue, as Chair.
You're the Chair?
I'm the vice chair.
I serve as a chair and the absence of a chair.
Can I take just a minute to read something that'll take thirty seconds, just for fun?
Commissioner Boyce had asked me earlier, and I declined, but now you're the Chair, so you have the assistant.
I promise, it's in fun, you know?
Okay, well, if you know we're having a, another meeting was noticed, a special meeting was noticed, following this...
This is just for fun, in a tense moment, when the Chair walks out of the meeting, so, apparently someone has decided to put up on Facebook information and post flyers about the Illinois drainage of Agnes stating, "If the Orville Dam were to break, everyone on the Illinois River drainage would be impacted with a two-hundred-foot wall of water that would be coming down the Illinois River." The flyer stated that it would be twice as high as the nineteen sixty-four flood levels. This is from a sheriff. Here's some basic information, Orville Dam is approximately two hundred ninety-seven miles south of, two hundred thirteen air miles from Cave Junction, near the headwaters of Illinois River. The Orville Dam is a hundred sixty-seven feet elevation at the bottom, and seven hundred seventy feet tall. It also points southwest towards Sacramento and San Francisco. The Siskiyou Mountains' lowest pass is twenty-two hundred thirty-four feet. So, if you hear somebody say, "We might be in danger," because I live on the Illinois River, would you tell them we're probably going to be okay? Thanks for listening.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Tros, do you want to give your presentation, and we can ask questions as we go through?
Sure. So, my apologies on any confusion that may have been taking place here. This is, I believe, a very important thing. You did ask, you know, does this postpone? And I think what it does do is, it, having this meeting allows us to move forward with the process of being able to develop a master plan, to look into our undeveloped properties with a group, a body of people, to come up with some informed ideas during this very critical shoulder season, so that we can start the planning process early. You know, as you guys know, when the park season kicks off, it's pretty much rapid-fire, and there's not much time to do much of the prep and planning at that time. You're just basically responding and working a lot on, you know, thousands of guests that are coming in to visit our parks. So, I appreciate you guys taking, and the time sensitivity. So what I have before you, basically, is, I'm asking for, to designate a Parks Advisory Committee. Now, this is something that's not new to park systems, actually, I find it actually very rare that we don't have one. When I looked at all of our sister counties, and they all have very active advisory committees, they do have more park properties, however, you know, like I said, we have some undeveloped ones that we need to, they were designated parks, oh, a year, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, that need, need some development and some direction, and so, instead of taking that on personally, and, and, you know, giving a direction, from my direction, allowing that public input and allowing that, that body of people to have input on that process would be fantastic.
So, do you have some people in mind for this committee, or?
I don't.
Okay.
I know there's a lot of stakeholders, lots of vested stakeholders in our parks, whether it's via trails, or just the camping experience, or the water sporting experiences that happen at Flores Lake, there's just a lot of, I mean, this is a park heavenland, I mean, it, the county is. And so, there's a lot of people who are vested in, in our, in our natural beauty and, and, you know, maintaining it and developing it. The Parks Advisory Committee may advise the Board of Commissioners on, and I listed some things here, the present and future overall park needs, short and long-term planning to include prioritizing projects, the location and acquisition of new potential parks, including the adding or reducing of existing parks, review land currently in the park system for possible use and value to the overall park system. There may be some pieces of property that we have that aren't conducive to actual using for parks, and may be better given back to the county, or to the road department, or something of that nature, and there may be vice versa. We did have a land task force unit look through all of this, really in-depth, and that's how we acquired our new properties.
Was that the Property Task Force?
Yes.
Two years ago?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So, these properties are listed, it says properties needing to be developed? Are those the properties you're referring to? I get it from page three.
Yes. And those are the, they're little lot codes, and it's just a small description of them that we are, that are not developed, currently not developed.
So, the plans that you have listed under all these five properties, have they been looked at extensively, or are these just kind of pie-in-the-sky things, or?
They're, so, no, they haven't been looked at extensively. Essentially, we went out and assessed the properties to see kind of what they would be conducive for. For instance, we have a property in the Checko River, and it's a beautiful property, and it does line along the Checko River, however, it's on a slide. So, putting anything of a permanent nature there would mean, would make no sense, but turning it into a potential drone park, or, you know, something of that nature, that geocaching, because that's pretty big, that would draw people to our community, might serve that piece of property's purpose, but turning it into a campground won't, because it's just, it's a slide. So, you know, it, we have some of those things that we've taken a look at, and tried to do what we felt, give an idea of what we felt some of those things would serve. Now, that might completely change, and the advisory, you know, committee may have brilliant ideas that, you know, trump these by far. So, this was just our initial sketch, if you will.
And then the acre that's adjacent to Canfield Park, something about developing a motorbike and motocross. I heard there's water contamination there, and it floods every year, so would that be a problem, once you do the trails, flood out, flooded out?
So, you've been talking to the Naseka Water District, I see? Very good, very prompt. So, so yes, their water plant is right adjacent to this, to Canfield. And so, initially, when we originally looked at it, we thought motocross, because that's essentially what the public has turned it into, is a little motocross area, and so, we thought, well, maybe we would just put parameters around it, and, you know, actually build it up and do those things. Now, I could make the argument that the jet boats put just as much oil in the water than the, in the motorc...
No, you can't. I can prove it.
Okay.
New Zealand studies.
All right, all right, we're down the wrong road with the wrong people, so...
Yeah.
But, they, they basically showed us a line that said, hey, as long as there's no development past this line, we would be okay. But the other thing that we had to take into account was, you know, public input, they may not want the noise, they may not want, you know, that action out there. And so, that's why we had the...
That's where you restrict days.
Well, that's why we put it, we had a mountain bike association, we solicited them to come out, we had them look at it as a potential, what is called a pump track, for mountain bikers, as, as an area that they could stop off to, to ride as they're coming through the county, for different various reasons. Because we know we have, we have a large constituent of tourists that come through that are recreationalists. And if we could provide that, like Vanden is doing right now, we could draw some of those people in. So that's when, that's why I put the mountain bike and/or motocross in there, because those were the two initial ideas, but there's a lot of obstacles probably either way, but it was just something to kind of spur the conversation.
And then we get down to number five, glamping. I know that's fancy camping, but...
So...
But that would take, I would think, a whole lot of development, especially with electricity, et cetera. I know down in the Port RV park, just putting those electric posts with the number of amps necessary for these highfalutin RVs is very expensive.
Is glamping camping on a glider or something?
No, no, glamorous camping.
It's glamorous camping. So, that was the original idea by the task force. So, we just renovated our, one of our parks up north, and added electric and water to each RV site. We did it on a very cost-effective level, to do the entire park, just over thirty thousand dollars, so, and it is...
But when you put the electric in, was it sufficient for huge RVs?
Fifty, thirty, and twenty amps, yeah.
With it, okay.
Yeah, we have big, big...
How many, how many sites?
Nineteen...
I should send you down to the port.
Nineteen or twenty-two. So, I, I'm, so I'm aware of what you're talking about, and so...
Okay. And these are just basically pie-in-the-sky ideas, right at this point?
They are long-term vision forecasting, I mean...
Okay.
And, you know, yesterday, had a conversation with a, with a very vested park person, and, you know, they reminded me that in between Gold Beach and Brookings, there is no pull-off camping for recreationalists, so what they end up doing is pulling along the side in the turnouts...
And that's true.
And it becomes a state police problem, when they are checking in on these folks, and this Pistol River area would be prime. And, and what I was reminded of is, because they saw the glamping thing, and they were like, that's really not the clientele that you would be advertising to on that, they're kind of hardened, they just need their van and a place to get out of the wind. You could probably get away with dry camping for a long time, until you resource enough revenue to make some amenity changes. But it's a beautiful piece of forty acres, right off of Pistol River, we are landlocked there, and so that becomes a problem, we'd have to get permissions from our adjacent landowners to, for an easement. But those, those are all... to, for an easement. Um, but those, those are all, those are all things that I think that the advisory committee can absolutely assist with. Um, going back to the original...
Mr. Tros.
Yes?
Did you, uh, include in the, the packet the inventory of the, from the Property Task Force by chance?
Not the entire...
It's, it's only?
Just for parks.
Four pages?
No, just for parks.
No, he just did five possibilities for parks.
Okay, I have a copy, but I have a copy of that for you and Commissioner Huxley. It's, uh, very good. It lists, if you haven't seen it yet, it's an inventory of every piece of property the county owns. And, uh, it was, it was a lot of work went into that. So I, I do have a copy. I thought I had it with me for you, but I'll get it at lunch or whatever.
Okay, thank you.
Shows GIS mapping of them and things of that nature. Um, so you can get an idea of exactly where these are. Um, but I mean, uh, my focus today was more along the lines of creating a committee to have these discussions and pu, and bring some real, you know, some real stuff to the board to, to, to begin to move on. Um, I know that being a commissioner on the Parks Board for Brookings has just been absolutely fantastic. Um, and seeing, you know, having monthly public input on the development of parks down in that area is just, it's vital. And I don't want to skip that opportunity for our county opportu, you know, especially in the middle of a development phase. Um, I just, I don't think that that would be, um, smart.
So are you going to be using, I know, um, the Development Department under Carolyn? They have a committee in place for land use. Are you going to be using that committee for, for land use?
Well, we will, we would have to do a lot of work with planning. I mean...
Okay.
Yeah. I, it, I mean, this entire project is, especially in the development pieces, is, is, is all planning. I mean, I mean, we have a new grant for a new ADA facility at Boyce Cove that we just were awarded last, on the 22nd formally, you know, for $105,000 that they're matching our 35 to put in new ADA facilities at Boyce Cove, um, because we, you know, we, we need that. And, you know, that's going to have to be, there's going to be some planning, you know, discussions with that, too, if we decide to change the footprint of the existing structure. So, um, I mean, yes. So to answer your question, yes. There will have to be extensive, um, collaboration with planning on, on these issues.
Okay.
Mr. Tros, when, uh, you and I and a couple others walked through the 500 acres between the airport and Forest Lake, on the idea there might be some pretty valuable timber there. I think you probably sensed my, my, almost in the, in the form of relief that there really, in my opinion, there really was not a lot of valuable timber there. Uh, and incredibly beautiful place. And just be able to walk through there was, was a real privilege. And, you know, I, I'm not a timber cruiser, but I, I know trees, uh, and have my entire life. But, um, and I also had in my office yesterday District Ranger Tina Lanier, and I started to mention a little bit about our concept of turning some of the Forest Service parks eventually over to county parks. And, uh, she had some comments on that that, uh, I don't need to go into today, but I think that, uh, there's some potential movement down the road. And I think as a board, and as a county, and as a parks, I, I think we can respectfully and reasonably pursue that.
Yep.
And, uh, the only thing I was going to ask you, you did reference other counties have advisory committees?
Yes.
Could you, and you spent some time on that. Could you just elaborate on that?
Um, well, I, I spoke with the Parks Directors from Coos in Jackson County, um, as our, kind of our closest counties. Uh, and they both very much, um, appreciate, you know, their parks committees. Coos is Parks Advisory Committee and is so longstanding. I mean, they've been, um, they've been a group for decades. And so, um, you know, it's been instrumental in development of, I think, their 27 parks. Most of them are day-use parks, but, I mean, they have an enormous park program there. And, you know, one of the things that I wanted, I, that I reminded the board of, the previous board, is that when you look at that, um, that map behind you and the legend that accompanies it, it identifies several parks that are no longer in the Curry County park system. And I, I'd made mention at that time that it was one of my goals to, um, to reinvigorate our county park system and find some of these lost parks, or re, you know, uh, you know, recreate, um, the opportunity for some recreation in, in our community, because it's, it's vital. Um, Jackson County's, uh, again, same thing, very longstanding Parks, um, Advisory Committee. They were, they talked very favorable about having the, the public input and, and, and having, um, having the ability to offer for public input on a monthly basis, especially during, you know, critical phases of park development are, are so, so, so necessary. Um, you know, when I took on this, the parks, there was no manual, there was no master plan, there was basically, here's your non-rev, non-general-funded parks.
Good luck.
Good luck, have fun. And so, you know, I, I've since created a, a, a manual, uh, for our parks, um, that's very in-depth, that will help guide, you know, some of our processes in the, in the advisory committee. Um, I'm still, I have an outlined master plan, but I have to fill in the master plan with the ideas of what we're going to do with these future properties, because it's, that's, that's so essential to what we're going to be doing in our forecasting our future. So, um, I'm really hesitant in moving forward with creating this master plan without having some more input from our, from our citizens.
And that's understandable. I think it's important to get input from interested people, so...
Yeah.
And, and, Madam Chair, and you mentioned early on that, that, uh, there are some people in this community, these communities, that would have a tremendous amount to contribute to, to, to your whole concept. And, uh, yes, I, I believe we should try and, and identify those people and recruit them as quickly as we can. And I think we'll be, uh, very happy with the results will come from that. And it sounds like we're a little bit behind the other counties, and so that gives us a goal, an option to make some goals on that. And, uh, uh, and too, I want to commend you and your, your staff. You've put together incredible staff. What you've done in, what, less than three years is, uh, it's really been a bright spot for this county, and I just really appreciate it. And I can speak for a lot of, a lot of citizens that have recognized that and, uh, cheering you on. Thank you.
Did you have anything else?
Um, I just, I have the rest of the stuff that, uh, that, you know, that, that the advisory committee would, could, um, advise the Board of Commissioners on.
Okay.
Um, and then some of the formatting that I would propose for our advisory committee. Um, I would, you know, I would like to see them advise on a, the objectives of new park development projects in which significantly change the level of service in a park, um, operational and maintenance policies required to ensure long-term success of our parks, assist in establishing and updating the car, parks master plan, um, and any other matter the committee feels important or necessary in achieving a good park program. Um, my, you know, when I was looking at basically putting the structure of this, the committee would meet first Wednesday of every month at 3:00 PM. Meeting schedules can be increased if needed, and the committee can consist of five to seven members. Um, and then there's an overview of, 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 of our, of our current state of parks. Um, now, yes, does our park receive taxpayer dollars to operate? No. But is our park on public land? Yes. And so, you know, that's, you know, I think the respected piece from the citizens is, you know, how do they want to see their land being best utilized? And, and how can we maximize the generate the revenue to be able to create these pie-in-the-sky, um, opportunities that we're looking at? And, and I think that, I think we can surround ourselves with some very smart, smarter-than-me people who can assist with that.
So do you think there's a real potential to increase our revenue? I know 2015, 16 was 92,000, which is good. We're not taking from the general fund. But if we can increase that, that might be a potential source of revenue to help the county out and help the park system.
So I have so many, um, when you talk about business, um, and increasing revenue ideas, yes. Um, I mean, obviously you see that we've almost had it, it's, it's about, uh, just under, you know, we went from 300, or $33,000 in 13, 14 to 92 in this last fiscal year.
So how much would you attribute to putting in electric?
Oh, a tremendous amount.
Okay.
Electric, water was a tremendous amount. Putting in laundry facilities, tremendous amount.
Mm-hmm.
Um, doing some, uh, we did events at Lobster Creek. We did a 50th anniversary, uh, event to, to, to kind of rebrand Lobster Creek from being just the youth camp to being the, you know, hey, it's, it's a family camp, it's a...
So were you able to put in those, uh, improvements just using the money coming in, or did you have to go to the county for the money?
No.
I'm kind of honed in to money right now, so...
I totally understand. No, it was grants. Um, it was grants from Oregon State Parks and Rec.
Okay.
They, every year, they offer an annual county grant for parks. And, um, that's what we, that's what we were just awarded for our new facilities up at Boyce Cove.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we were, um, awarded, uh, in 13, 14 for the electric and water to be added in. Um, and, uh, so no, there's no, there ha, as, as long as I've been here, there hasn't been a general fund ask.
Okay. Just curious.
Yeah. So, um, but we do, we do search for grants, um, and those opportunities.
And speaking of grants, uh, would it be possible to get a grant to help us out on putting that new dam in at Boyce Park?
Well...
Just throwing that out there.
I'm, I'm...
Do some work on that.
I'm, I'm never going to give up the opportunity. I mean, uh, Councilwoman and myself have, uh, have, have beat the drum. Um, and so...
And, and if I could, uh, we have called a special meeting to talk about that in the memorandum that I prepared. Um, we talk about financing options, and one of the options, and we'll get to this at the next meeting.
Okay.
Is a search for grants. So, uh, without, you know, mixing the subjects of the two meeting, even though, because it's parks-related, it's parks-related. But yes, the answer is yes. We'll be looking for grants. Uh, that's one of the options, uh, for that.
Um, and I, you know, I would like to say that, you know, I would, it, you know, it's the absolute hope that at some point we become stable enough to where there would be county contributions to our park system, and that, that would be a valued asset within our county, you know, at some point, you know, down the line, when we become fiscally, you know, more, I guess, stable, I guess would be the best term I could use. And, um, you know, that's, that's, I will never let that hope go either, um, because I believe it's, I believe it's very valuable for the county to invest in its, in its recreational opportunities.
Did you have anything else?
No.
I have no additional questions, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll adjourn this part of the meeting then. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we're scheduled to reconvene at 11:30, um, for the special meeting on the Boyce Cove Park.
Thank you.
What draws you to the Oregon coast? Is it the green and blue surf on a brilliant sunny day, or angry boiling waves during a raging winter storm? Do you prefer quiet coves or powerful breakers churning the sand? How about sand castles? Do you come for the rising tide or the setting sun, to marvel at whales gliding through the sea or flying in the sky? Reasons to travel the Pacific Coast scenic...